Can you guys hear us?
Yes, can you hear us?
I can too, yes. And it is 6:30.
Alright, so all the audio video is good?
Did somebody just walk out? I don't think so. Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. Well, if we're good to go, I'm gonna call to order tonight's regular city commission meeting for November 16th, 2020. We're virtual tonight. We've got a couple of people there at the, um, at the commission room, but for right now, the commissioners are virtual. So Tabitha, can we have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Young.
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Did you get that?
I can't hear him. He might be having speaker issues, Greg.
Okay.
Oh, no, now we got you. You're there now. Okay, and Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Commissioner Wilkinson, you're kinda muffled, so we might need you to move your phone.
Present.
Okay, now I got you. Alright.
Alright, so we have a quorum. Um, Tabitha, do we have Reverend Mark Somerville in the room?
We do.
Okay, so tonight for invocation, we've got Reverend Mark Somerville with Family Worship Center.
Show me prayer. My gracious Father, tonight we come to you. Lifting our hearts to you this evening, we are a nation that is in the grip of a pandemic. We are feeling its effects even in our own city. And tonight we ask that you lay your healing hand upon our city this evening and minister to it in a special way. Lord, we pray tonight for our commissioners as they continue to leave this city, that you'll visit them with your wisdom, with your guidance, and your direction today. And Lord, we just pray for America tonight again. Lord, have your way in this country, we pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
And thank you. Alright, if we can get a shot of the flag there. If everyone could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I don't know if we're able to move.
Good enough, I got a flag right here. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let me get my agenda pulled up here. So we don't have any proclamations or recognitions, so we're gonna move on. Personal appearances? Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Tabitha, do we have any personal appearances tonight?
We have none on the agenda.
Yes.
She stepped away. Oh, I'm sorry, we do.
Jamie Downs, Butler County Health Department.
Jamie Downs, Butler County Health Department.
Perfect. I would love to hear from Jamie.
Let's see, um, I was called to, to come here, so I'm not exactly sure what all you were wanting. So just some basic updates of the state of the county and of what I did last week with the county commissioners. Uh, our numbers are skyrocketing. We're having anywhere from 50 to 60 positives a day. As of tonight, our total is around 1,548. In the last week, we added four more deaths, so we are now to seven deaths for our county. Our positivity rate is 14.9%. Our testing at the health department, again, we're seeing a huge increase. We've gone from 20 a day to each testing site to over 60. A huge demand that we're trying to meet. As you're aware, we, the health department did do a press release last week because we are to our limit. We are overwhelmed working the positive cases, working contact tracing. So we just put out a plea to citizens to be responsible. Again, you know, take care of themselves, protect everybody else, wear masks, social distance, limit your mass gatherings. And we also asked that if they tested positive, to reach out to the people they were in close contact with and ask them to quarantine themselves.
I don't know if there's any questions, comments. Am I doing that?
Yeah, I think you're good, Commissioner. She's asking if you have any questions or comments.
Jamie, this is Kendra.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry.
Hold on just a second, Commissioner Wilkinson, we can barely hear you.
If I put the tablet closer, can you hear me?
Still, still can't get you. Bear with us a second.
Okay.
Sorry, we're going in as we go.
Are you ready for her to try again?
Um, let's see if Kendra can, we can hear her.
Commissioner Wilkinson, can you give the shot again?
Jamie, this is Kendra.
Yes, Kendra.
Uh, how is the school district doing?
Um, the schools are doing everything they can to keep going. We know that for El Dorado, that their middle school and high school have went remote. One, because of the number of cases, but two, because of staffing. They're keeping the grade schools in person as long as they can because, well, we know that kids just learn better when they're in person. Other districts are struggling as well.
How is the staffing in your department?
Um, I am very short-staffed. I have one nursing vacancy that I finally today got an application for. I have another vacancy that I hope to have filled by next week. But I have several staff out on quarantine themselves. And so the call volume that we are getting, plus trying to call with test results, has just, yeah, overwhelmed my staff. So, you know, again, that's why we put out the call that you might not hear from us. Here's what we need you to do.
Do you know how the hospital's doing?
I haven't been at, well, actually, I get a daily report from our two hospitals, and they are both, um, capacity is almost full. Um, Kate, Andover Hospital is fuller than, than SBA, but they both, again, staffing issues. I know Friday, the conversation came up as to where the closest COVID bed would be if they had to send someone because both of them were full on their COVID beds, and it was to someplace in Missouri because Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Colorado, and Nebraska had no COVID beds.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie, thank you.
Welcome.
Let's move on to agenda item number six. Public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding any items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Citizens with, with information for the city commission are encouraged to contact City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 for instructions on alternative ways of communicating with the city commission. Is there anyone in the room tonight for public comment?
I don't believe there is.
Okay. We'll close public comment then. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And just to let everybody know, since we are operating remotely tonight, all of the motions that are made will be, Tabitha's gonna do a roll call to make sure that we record them correctly and to make sure that those watching on, on our multiple outlets to be able to watch this, understand what's going on. So on the consent agenda tonight, approval of the city commission minutes from November 2nd, 2020, and special city commission minutes from October 14th and October 27th, 2020. Approval of appropriation ordinance number 10-20, the amount of $1,317,962.77 and a cereal malt beverage license for Prairie Trails Golf LLC located at 1100 Country Club Lane. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to the consent agenda as a, as presented is approved.
Second. I have a motion as second. Is there any further discussion? Tabitha, can we get a roll call vote?
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway is absent. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Motion carries. There's nothing on, agenda item number 10, there's no old business, so we're gonna jump into new business tonight. Agenda item number 11, special use permit application for 930 Douglas Road.
Yes, Commission, Temple Baptist Church, which is located at 930 Douglas Road, is requesting a special use permit to extend their existing parking lot on the east side of Douglas Road to serve their church facility located on the west side of Douglas Road. The planning commission held a public hearing October 22nd and voted six to zero to recommend approval of a special use. There was a, um, a member, um, or owner, property owner within the area that did speak at the public hearing and shared concerns about drainage. We shared with them the fact that part of this process is the church will submit a site plan detailing their drainage, elevations, um, um, to staff for approval, so that would be part of the process. But there was no other comments at the public hearing. I stand for any questions, if you may have any.
And this passed, you said it passed the planning commission unanimously, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve case number 20-09 SGP. Requesting the SGP to expand off-site parking at 930 Douglas Road, and the ordinance number is 1340. Be approved.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Do we have any further discussion? Tabitha, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway is absent. Commissioner Wilkinson? Commissioner Wilkinson?
Tabitha, if you're talking, I can't hear you.
Sorry, my button was off. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
There you are. And Mayor Young?
Yes. Motion carries. We're getting through this, guys. I appreciate, appreciate the patience. So move on to agenda item number 12, dilapidated homes public hearing.
Yes, this evening was the, the date of the public hearing for the, um, um, consideration of, of forcing resolution or ultimate demolition of four homes. They're located at 712 West Ash, 307 South Atchison, 733 South Denver, and 805 South Main. Along with your packet tonight are supporting resolutions. If you're so inclined in passing these resolutions, it'll give the owners of those properties and all interested parties 30 days to commence repairs to those structures or have them demolished. If at that time, after 30 days, that has, has not occurred, then the city would go ahead and raise the structure and assess the cost of, um, demolition onto the property as a special assessment. Staff has not received anything in writing or via phone calls or person-to-person contact on any of these four properties. There is, um, one thing I want to point out in the resolutions in your packet, it does say 60 days. That is incorrect. It should, staff is recommending 30. It is at your will to, um, to put whatever, at least 30 days or more in there. If you recall, the last hearings we had, we did a few of the structures at 30, and one, we heard from an owner who asked for more time, and, and you granted that as a body.
But thus far, you've had no feedback?
Staff hasn't. No.
Okay. I think at this time, we'll open the public hearing.
Mayor, we have someone that wishes to speak. He's making his way.
Perfect, thank you.
Just come up to the podium, say your name and your address, and, and speak. I don't know if you have trust your money. You just need to tell. Need to tell them your name and your address. I know your name, but he needs my name. I'm, I'm Rachel Lasorda, but this is in regards to the property at 733 South Denver, and this is Giovanni Costa, and it's his property. If you just tell the commission what you'd like to say. Um, so he's in the process of trying to sell the property. Um, he's got two people that are looking at buying it, and then, um, one wants to demolish it and just use the property, the other one wants to buy it and fix it. So he's got two people that he's working with. If he could get an extension of at least 30 days, probably, preferably 60, that would be a huge help for him.
Was everyone able to hear that?
Sorry.
Double check.
Oh, yes, okay. So, so you're asking to extend 733 South Denver to 60 days?
Yes, please.
Do you, um, you have a contract on anything yet?
No, they're personal, um, they're personal contacts. They own construction companies.
So there's nothing in writing? There's no offers? There's not, nothing in, in writing yet on this?
Did Nathan make an offer on this? Have you guys written anything up? They're in the middle of negotiations.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I, and I can understand that, but I can also understand that the house is dilapidated. If you're on this list, this thing has gone, gone beyond pretty, everything that I saw, every, it is not, it is not a fixable structure. Um, I, I believe that at this point right now, um, we went, we, when we did this last year, we had someone try to do the exact same thing. You know what happened? Didn't sell. Nothing happened on it. We didn't hear from the lady again. We tore it down. So, um, I, I, I appreciate it, but I think at some point or another, um, we have to stand up for your neighbors and the people that live in that area and having properties that, um, are unsafe and are creating issues through most of these neighborhoods. Um, I, I'm, I'm gonna say that we just proceed as is.
I have a question of the commission. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, if we gave a 30-day extension, even though they asked for possibly 60, if nothing's happening within 30 days, it's probably not gonna happen. So I, I would consider a 30-day and probably nothing more.
So Commissioner Wilkinson, you're saying extend it from 30 to 60 days?
No, 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 no. I'm saying just do it for 30 days. And if nothing has happened in that 30 days, then go ahead and demolish.
Like have us as staff maybe be, report back to you or have them come back at a December, late December meeting?
Yes. Just a thought from the, to the commission.
I think that's what the staff was asking for also, is that 30 days. So I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the standard 30 days. I'm just, at, at some point or another, um, we, we did this last year, didn't work out.
Agreed.
I agree with staff too.
So just for clarification, he has 30 days to either sell it or demolish it, correct?
Yes. Or commence repair, yeah. Or, or come up with a, a reasonable way to repair the structure, bring it back in to meet, be a safe, fit structure for human habitation.
And the way, the way I understood the resolution was that it would be, um, sold or demolished or they'd bring a plan to you on how they're gonna get it put back together in the timeframe of that plan. That's why I read the resolution.
Correct.
And then we'll vote again to execute the demolition? Is that, is that how it worked last time? I can't remember.
It did not. We just, we went ahead and did that, executed that. But we can if that's the favor of the commission.
Oh, I don't think we, I just, I was just trying to remember what we did last time. I know you at least notified us, like 30 days was up, um, we're moving forward.
We, we brought you bids, um, for the demolition. You approved those.
I got you.
Does he need to have a license to have it demolished?
We will, we will visit about the demolition and the permits involved, and, and we can help you with that.
Okay.
And, and here's my card with my phone number. So give us a holler tomorrow, whenever you're free.
Okay.
That's fine, yep, uh-huh. No, we can figure it out. Yep, not, not a problem. Thank you for coming. That's great. Yeah, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else there, Tabitha?
Not.
No, there isn't.
Not for this topic.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm awaiting some motions.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2910, stating that a structure at 712 West Ash is unsafe or dangerous, and directing the structure be required to be, be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second.
The motion is second. Roll call, Tabitha.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2911, stating that a structure at 307 South Atchison is unsafe or dangerous, and directing the structure be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second.
We have a motion as second. A roll call, Tabitha.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Uh, next motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2917, stating that a structure at 733 South Denver is unsafe or dangerous, and directing the structure be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second.
We have a motion as second. Is that, is that resolution number 2912 or 2917?
2912.
Okay. Motion as second. Roll call, Tabitha.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
And that motion carries. One more.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2913, that a structure at 805 South Main be, is unsafe or dangerous, and directing the structure be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure.
Second.
Motion as second. Any discussion? Roll call, Tabitha.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson? Sorry, Commissioner Lewis is what I'm gonna say. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you, staff, by the way, for the work that you guys have done to, to get us the documentation, the information needed on these dilapidated structures. I think the public, um, the public is definitely supportive of moving forward and trying to remove some of the blight and dilapidated structures throughout the community. I know that this commission, Commissioner Guthrie and Lewis and Wilkinson and, and Commissioner Badway are all, um, you know, kind of on board with this, this process of, of, of trying to remove some of the blight throughout our community. So I appreciate the work you guys have done.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number 13, confab and OCI tax abatement public hearing.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, um, this item was before you last year and, um, was sent in for approval by the State of Kansas Board of Tax Appeals. Um, they contacted us, uh, two weeks ago, maybe three weeks now, um, and state, and stated that they needed the public hearing notice, and it was at that time that we realized the paper did not publish the notices. Um, the paper has apologized, and they very quickly got the information to me when I resented for this meeting. And so the Board of Tax Appeals has said that all we need to do is hold a public hearing this evening. Um, once we do that, they will, they should have a decision to us within a couple days.
Okay, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anybody, uh, present that would like to speak at the public hearing?
There's no one here.
There's no one there, just you guys?
Well, okay, I said there's no one here. Lee White and Kurt Zeeman are here, but I don't know that they, they didn't get up, so I don't think they wanna speak.
Well, hi, Lee, and hi, Chief. And if there's no one here to speak to this issue, then I will close the public hearing. And do we need any motions or just have the public hearing?
That, we just needed a public hearing. We've already done all the motions associated with the ordinances.
Well, that was easy, okay. So we'll move on to agenda item number 14, speculative building policy.
City Commission, what you have in front of you is a policy to grant or allow the city to grant tax abatements for speculative buildings, also known as buildings that are constructed without a tenant to occupy the building at the time of construction. Uh, the policy will allow the city to consider granting a maximum of a five-year, 80% tax abatement for speculative buildings conforming to the criteria specified in the policy. Buildings with at least 50% of leasable space, occupiable after the initial five years, they receive up to a 75% abatement for the second five years. The final payment percentages will be determined using the city's industrial revenue bond and constitutional abatement policy criteria. Um, so in essence, what this policy will allow the city to do is apply the industrial revenue bond and constitutional abatement policy to, uh, again, speculative or non-b buildings without tenants at the time of construction. Um, and so you would be able to do that. If you build a building at risk and you're trying to find someone to occupy the space, uh, this policy will grant, will allow the city to grant a tax abatement for that project. The city, incidentally, had a policy like this shortly, um, well, before I arrived, and then shortly after I arrived, it, um, expired, and we didn't, um, re, re-up it. We, we didn't, we didn't continue it or bring it back before the commission. We have had some interest from, uh, the public to get a policy like this put back in place. Um, and it does make us competitive for projects that may be coming to our area that are looking for buildings. If we have this policy in place and we are able to attract an investor to build a building, we can compete for projects that need a building at the time they... we can compete for projects that need a building at the time they, they select a location. Good example of this was Amazon's warehouse in Park City. They located in that location primarily because they had a speculative building ready to go for them to move in. So it does make us a little bit more competitive in terms of the regional marketplace. And this abatement policy pretty much follows a line with what our current policy is. It just allows it to be applied to speculative buildings. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Is, is there any part of this policy that's then retroactive to anybody that's built a speculative building in the last, I mean, since this policy expired?
No. So it would be effective, assuming the commission passes it tonight, it would be effective for any buildings that occurred after the effective date of the resolution.
Okay.
We think that this is, I mean, I'm just trying to get some feedback. Is it, do we feel like if, that we haven't had this, that we would have had spec buildings by now?
Well, it's hard to say because, I mean, I can't go back in the past and
I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking for, I'm, I'm just looking to speculate. I'm not, I don't need it, I don't need it to be perfect.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there, I've been to several meetings where there's been folks that have expressed an interest in building a spec building or, or exploring that, but they, they don't want to do it because they don't want to pay the taxes on the project. So I think it's reasonable to assume that something like that could happen if the right investors were brought to the table to facilitate a project like that.
Okay, thank you.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion. Commissioner Lewis?
I move to approve resolution number 2914, a resolution providing a supplemental speculative building policy to the industrial revenue bond and constitutional tax abatement policy for the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? Roll call, Tabitha.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the, item on the agenda is the Riverview, Riverview Park Playground Equipment Bid Approval.
Mayor Young, Commissioners, the Sales Tax Committee approved two playgrounds for 2021, and the first of those is Riverview Park. We received $60,000 from the Sales Tax Committee for that playground and sent bids out, I think it's been about a month and a half ago now. And we received bids back a couple of weeks ago and got them from three companies. We narrowed the choices down to two options, and it was decided that we should send it out to the public for their input. We received an overwhelming number of votes for option B, which is the AB Creative Design. It has the tall, like climbing piece with the, with the big round slide. And so we would like to get approval on that bid so that we can get it delivered. And city staff will be putting this playground in after we finish the bank stabilization project down in Riverview. So the first step down there will be to remove the existing playground, so it'll be gone for a little bit while we do that stabilization project early in 2021, and we're hoping to have the playground equipment installed by summer.
Awesome, thank you. Well, the design was amazing. And I, I was really glad to see that, that there was a lot, there was a lot of feedback, a lot of votes for that. There was, there were some really good designs, but this one definitely jumped out. It'd be a great addition, I think, to the Riverview Park and the Riverview side of town. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that since AB Creative, Inc. has submitted the best bid for playground equipment at Riverview Park, the city manager be directed to award the bid to said contractor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please, Tabitha.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Okay, that's the end for our regular agenda. There's no items for discussion, so we'll move on to commission reports. We will start with my top left corner, which is Commissioner Lewis.
I was approached to see if the city of El Dorado would come up with a way for the plumbers in town and that are working for Wichita can submit their backflow checks to the city via online instead of having to send the paperwork in, because some of these plumbers can't go back to their main offices because of COVID, and so they're working on the jobs and, and they don't have the proper work to submit to the city of El Dorado. The city of Wichita has such a program. Can we do one for the city of El Dorado?
I believe it's something we can look into.
Okay. We got some smart people down there. I think you, they could probably figure it out. What else you got, Greg?
That's all I have.
That's it?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Guthrie?
Speaking of Riverview, did, did we get cleaning out underneath the bridge on the list? I haven't been out in a couple of days, so is that on the list to get done anytime soon?
It's on the list to get done, but I couldn't give you a timeline for when that's actually going to be done.
Okay. That's all I got.
Thanks, Matt. Do you, David, do you think that maybe you could get back with us at the next meeting and let us know that if, if your staff can find a timeline for that?
Yep, we will definitely do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilkinson?
I have nothing.
Perfect. All right. City managers report.
Let's see here. The city received notification that our Tenniscore complex has won the American Council of Engineering Companies of Kansas City Public Improvement Award for the 5,000 to 20,000 population category. So that's, that's kind of cool. The city will receive the award virtually at the Kansas City Managers Conference in December, and then we'll have a formal presentation hopefully here in the beginning of December for that project. We are looking to have to amend two of our budgets, I'm sorry, two of our funds for the 2020 budget. The Economic Development Fund received $32,000 in additional revenue resulting from the sale of lots in the Crowder Edition that we didn't necessarily budget for, but that's good because that's revenue. And then the Compressed Natural Gas Fund spent $32,000 more than originally budgeted due to the purchase of a natural gas compressor. The fund does have sufficient revenues to pay for the expense, although the purchase was not initially budgeted. So we do have that, that we will have to take care of as well. Next week is Thanksgiving, so we have a couple of changes to the traffic schedule. The Thursday route will be collected on Wednesday. However, the Monday, Tuesday, and Friday routes will run as normal. So the only route that will change next week due to Thanksgiving is the Thursday route, which will be collected again on Wednesday for next week. Please remember to have your carts out to the curb by 7:00 AM to ensure pickup. And that's kind of all I have for now.
Thank you, David. When, I forgot to mention during, during commission reports, I just wanted to thank Jamie Downs for coming down today. I, I think it's important that we all keep, keep in mind the things that she said, that, you know, it's, it's flu season and COVID season, obviously, so, you know, numbers are ticking up. It's important to just be responsible when you're out and about. And if you can't be responsible, don't go out and about. So be good neighbors, be good, be good stewards of our community, and I think that we'll all get through this. So I do appreciate all the work that the Butler County Health Department's doing and our local hospitals and our healthcare providers throughout the area, but especially in, in El Dorado and in Butler County. So very appreciative of the work. I know Jamie and her staff are certainly taxed down there, as are the staffs of, of the hospitals and, and our healthcare providers. So thank you, Tabitha, or David, or whoever invited Jamie down to talk to us. I appreciate that. And thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson, for your questions and your input when Jamie was here. I don't have anything else. There's no executive session, so do we have, before we take a motion to adjourn, I guess, hey, this was not a totally unsuccessful Zoom commission meeting, so thanks, staff, for getting this put together, and I, I understand there's some new technology pieces coming in that might kind of streamline this even a little bit more. So as we move into our next work session and potentially our next commission meeting, if, if people are still quarantined, we can do this. So thanks, staff, for doing this, and Darcy, for all of your work back in the production booth. But before I continue rambling, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second.
Motion is second. You know what? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Did you get that, Tab?
I did.
Motion carries. Y'all have a great night. Thanks.
Thank you.